Good, I want to see what spark.
You're supposed to be looking at it. Do you have anybody coming into town this weekend?
No, is it time to move?
Yeah.
I did sit by Danny yesterday.
Oh, you did? How was he?
When we finished the meeting, I'll play one set. It was a nice compliment.
Oh, that's nice. Stand ready, but I don't want to stand in front of the sign. Do you want me to push the button? Oh, okay. Yeah, sure, no problem. I bet you we just need a new battery. Doesn't like us right now.
10-second warning, are we ready? I think I've got my ION Councils ready. Three, two, one. Welcome to the Student Citizen of the Month, one of the favorite events related to the Gilbert Town Council and things we like to attend. I'd like to introduce the Town Council. I am Mayor John Lewis. To my left, Councilmember Victor Peterson, Vice Mayor Jordan Ray, Councilmember Bridget Peterson, Councilmember Jared Taylor, Councilmember Eddie Cook, Councilmember Jen Daniels. Give them a nice big round of applause. And in just a couple of minutes, we're going to be giving you a big round of applause because we have right in this room our Student Citizens of the Month, and you have done some great things and we appreciate it. In a few minutes, and I'll explain how we'll do this, we're going to take some pictures. And if you wanted to get a copy of the picture, there's a little card that looks like this. Gardinha also has some. And it will tell you how to go out and find the pictures that are taken of you and to find other things that tell us what's happening in the town of Gilbert, the largest town in the United States, 22nd best place to live in the United States. Anything else, Gardinha I could say? And she will be uploading to Facebook tonight. A couple of quick announcements that we like to make. First, next slide. Tomorrow is the Student App Competition first day. Just so you're aware, many of the high schools in Gilbert and throughout the entire valley are competing in the Spark App. This is our third annual. This is where high school students are given an assignment, and this year it's going to be our tourism data. And they get to create an app in a contest where Google, Intel, and other groups are involved. And we pick a winner and big prizes. Next slide. On February the 14th at the Reparating Park, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and there's more information that will come out about this, the Outdoors Expo, please pay attention to that. The next slide is on Saturday, February the 28th. And this is a little bit hard to see, but there are flyers in the back of the room that will tell you on this particular Saturday in support of Gilbert Education Foundation, alias our town manager lost a bet to the mayor on which team is going to win the World Series. And so the town manager is helping sponsor this event. Local high school bands are going to be competing in helping do some fundraising for Gilbert Education Foundation. Next slide is in the bags that you'll be receiving. All the Student Citizens of the Month are a couple of vendors in town that are giving you prizes. They're from Mike's Burgers Cheese Stakes Ice Cream right across the street, and from our Taste Buds Favorite Frozen Yogurt also across the street. They wanted to thank you for your efforts, and so in your bag you will have some coupons to go to those places or anywhere else in Gilbert you'd like to go to tonight if you can, before you go back and do homework, to be treated, because again, you are Student Citizens of the Month. We're going to begin with three groups. And the next slide, Councilmember Daniels describes that Group One, if your elementary school has the first letter from A to J, and so that might be Ashland Ranch, all the way up to, the I would be Islands. If your elementary school begins with that first letter, we're going to invite you to come down and stand right behind me. And then we're going to bring you up one at a time where you will be recognized and receive your... This bag says Think Shop Gilbert. So Shop Gilbert, Think Gilbert, all together in this nice green bag with a few prizes in it. So, Group One, if you could stand up and come on down by Vice Mayor Ray. If your elementary school is that first letter, come on down and stand right back here. And Councilmember Daniels will read each name one at a time, and we'll have the individual to be recognized come stand right here. We'll take a picture. If you would also like to take a picture, feel free to come down in this area. After everyone in Group One has been recognized, we're going to do a group picture. So Councilmember Daniels, let's begin.
Thank you, Mayor. From Ashland Ranch Elementary, Jocelyn Flake. From Benjamin Franklin Charter, Jacob Gottwald. From Burke Elementary, Sadie McConnell. From Carroll Ray Ranch Elementary, Sadie Ogburn. From Chaparral Elementary, Tessa Hennes. Oh, Mayor, right behind you.
Oh, did we get that? Okay, right here. Excellent. Were we both smiling? Okay.
From Centennial Elementary, Alexis Herney. From Christ Greenville Lutheran School, Abigail Dossel. From Finley Farms Elementary, Tanner Ellie. From Gateway Point Elementary, Benjamin Buchi. From Gilbert Elementary, Vincent Bono. From Greenfield Elementary, Beau Gould. From Highland Park Elementary, Catherine Almeida. From Higley Traditional Academy, Macy Clontz. From Houston Elementary, Madeline Adams. And from Islands Elementary, Brenda Martinez.
Thank you. Group One, if you can come stand right here, we're going to invite the entire council to join you for this picture. Okay, council, smile like they do. Thank you. Let's give Group One a big round of applause. You may go back to your seats. We invite those in Group One to stay if you can. If for some reason if you need to leave, you're invited to do so, and we'll be done about 7:00 p.m., so in about 15 minutes. We're now going to invite Group Two. If you go to elementary school and you've not been called up yet, specifically if your first letter of your elementary school is from K to Z, please come on down. As you're coming down, I also wanted to recognize any of our teachers, school administrators that may be in the room. Could you please stand and be recognized? Those standing are very special assets in Gilbert, and you're the ones leading our Student Citizens of the Month, and so we thank you for your efforts. And I think Group Two's ready. Let's continue. Councilmember Daniels.
Thanks, Mayor. From Mesquite Elementary, Jaden Mendoza. From Neely Traditional Academy, Cindy Chau-Bao Hoyn. From Oak Tree Elementary, Dana Olivas. From Patterson Elementary, Macy Taylor. From Pioneer Elementary, Joe Walter. From Playa del Rey Elementary, William Johnson.
So Councilmember Cook, this is your neighbor right here. How did you get to be so lucky?
I don't know.
Okay.
From Power Ranch Elementary, Maddox Welker. From Quartz Hill Elementary, Katerina Painter. From Sandtown Elementary, Isaac Maldonado. From Settlers Point Elementary, Tanner Richens. From Sonoma Ranch Elementary, Zachary Rail. From Spectrum Elementary, Joelle Poulsen. From Town Meadows Elementary, Afton Parker. And from Val Vista Lakes Elementary, Kennedy Neal.
Group Two, excellent job. Come forward and we'll do a picture together. Big round of applause for Group Two, thank you. Group Three, if you are in junior high or high school, we invite you to come on down. It is a pleasure to have you here, and we will continue. Councilmember Daniels.
From Campaverty High School, Nyla Leonardi. From Cooley Middle School, Emily Halter. From Gilbert Classical Academy, Sierra K. Warren. From Gilbert High School, Audrey Fierro. From Gilbert Junior High, Riley Bear Parlant. From Greenville Junior High, Brianna Hanks. From Highland High, Nadu Adiko. From Mesquite High School, Bryson Jones. From Mesquite Junior High, Jake Girkink. From Sausman Middle School, Tristan Morrow. From South Valley Junior High, Amari Roberts. From Williamsfield High, Michael Tesiner. And from Payne Junior High, Joe Dominguez.
Group Three, if you could join me right up in this vicinity. This is where the council has to get on our toes, right? Let's give Group Three another big round of applause. Thank you, may be seated. To all the recipients, we thank you for being here. Some of the specific reasons we didn't really mention, but they're various. And they're reasons where people were noticing great things you're doing, so keep it up. You are our official Student Citizens of the Month. This part of our meetings tonight now adjourns, and you are free to go eat ice cream and other fun places and to go home and do dishes and homework. Thank you. If you'd like to stay for their formal council meeting, it will begin in about five minutes. To our Gilbert Town Council meeting, January 29, 2015. We've just completed our student citizen of the month program, so our meeting has had a short recess and will now continue. We'll continue with the pledge of allegiance, which will be offered by our police chief, Tim Dorn. And we invite all of you who are here in council chambers to please arise.
Please face the flag and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As noted on the agenda, the invocation may be offered by a person of any religion, faith, belief or non-belief, as well as council members. A list of volunteers is maintained by the town clerk. An interested person should contact the clerk for further information. Tonight, we invite Councilmember Jared Taylor to offer the invocation.
Our heavenly Father, we're grateful for this evening that we have to join at this council meeting. We're grateful for the favorable circumstances in which we're able to assemble. We're grateful for the rain that's falling to bless this desert land. We're grateful for this wonderful town of Gilbert, the wonderful people in it. We pray for their safety. We pray for their well-being and prosperity. We pray for our public safety officials and are grateful for them for the efforts that they do to keep us safe. We're grateful for those that are overseas that are fighting for our safety and liberty in the services. And we pray for them, that they'll return safely to their families. We're grateful for the freedoms of our country and our land. Pray that we'll do those things that are pleasing in thy eyes and according to thy will is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Our deputy clerk will now conduct the roll call.
Mayor John Lewis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jordan Ray.
Here.
Councilmember Eddie Cook.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Daniels. Councilmember Victor Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Bridget Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Jared Taylor.
Here.
Aquarium is present.
Thank you. We will continue our first three agenda items under presentations and proclamations. Councilmember Peterson will ask you to begin.
All right, so I have this, I don't know what you'd call this, a scarf? A mantle? Something like that? But it's just recognizing National School Choice Week. And so we do have a proclamation associated to that. And I think Mayor Lewis knows me well enough, I am enthusiastic about school choice. I'm enthusiastic about competition in general. I do think it helps us all to strive to be our best selves and to reach higher heights than we otherwise would. So thank you, Mayor, for this opportunity. And without further ado. Whereas all children in the town of Gilbert should have access to the highest quality education possible. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options that challenge and motivate all our students to succeed. Now therefore, John W. Lewis, Mayor of the town of Gilbert, does hereby recognize January 5th through January 31st, 2015, as Town of Gilbert School Choice Week in Gilbert, Arizona. And he calls this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Signed, John Lewis. Thank you, Mayor.
Agenda item number two, we are going to be recognizing someone who has served in the town of Gilbert for 23 years. With the rain, members of her family are delayed. And so we're going to postpone it. And as soon as they arrive, we'll just slip them right in. So we're going to move to agenda item number three, to members of our financial team, audit team, please. You may begin.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and councilmembers. My name is Florence Schultz. I'm the accounting manager in the Finance and Management Services Department. I'm here tonight to present to you the town's comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. We like to call CAFR, along with the single audit report and the town's expenditure limitation report. I just wanted to point out a couple of changes between the fiscal year 2014 CAFR and the prior year CAFR. A change that was made to the fund financial statements that are shown on pages 18 and 19 and 22 and 23. The capital projects funds were reclassified in fiscal year 2014. These funds are now reported based on funding source. Another change to the fiscal year 2014 CAFR was due to the implementation of governmental accounting standards board number 65. This statement reclassified certain items that were previously reported as assets and liabilities and now are reported as deferred inflows of resources or deferred outflows of resources. And this is new terminology that you are going to see on the statement of net position and on the balance sheet. Second, I would also like to point out again that we have received no audit findings for this fiscal year audit. If you should have any questions regarding these changes or any other questions about the information in these reports, please do not hesitate to contact me. Next, I would like to introduce Coria Visu. He is the audit partner of Heinfeld Meachin Company. He and his audit staff performed the audit on these reports.
Thank you Florence and good evening Mayor, members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss with you and present to you the results of the 2014 audit. The audit essentially begins in the spring, is when we begin our planning of the audit, typically in the May timeframe. We do a couple of site visits throughout the year. And the audit concludes here in December, as far as when we finish reviewing all the reports. Completion of our audit procedures is typically in December. So there's a timeframe throughout the year. And just to give you some point of reference, about 500 to 600 staff hours from our firm is invested in the audit of the town of Gilbert. I'll just, I know you've been provided the report that Florence mentioned or some of the reports, also the single audit report and the expenditure limitation report. I'll just mention a few items within those reports that I think maybe are relevant or important from the perspective of the governing body. The CAFR, as Florence mentioned, comprehensive annual financial report, starts off with a transmittal letter, which was prepared by management and signed by Cindy. I think it's a very good introduction to financial statements. Talks about the profile of the town. Mentions some of the revenue sources, budget policies and some of the initiatives. So I think it's a very good introductory letter to your financial statements. And that's part of that comprehensive program. Normal financial statements would not include that letter. But since the town does participate in that comprehensive report program, that's one of the additional items in there. Obviously, in the financial statements is our auditor's report that the financial statements are materially correct and can be used on by users and relied upon by users of the financial statements. And that's on page one of the CAFR. Also, in a report of governmental financial statements is what's called the management's discussion analysis. That's right after auditor's report. And a very good narrative overview, year-to-year overview of changes in the town's revenues, expenditures, balance sheet. It is a required part of the financial statements, but the town does a very good job of trying to make it as readable, I think, for users of that document as it can be. Some charts and graphs and bolted type discussion items. The financial statements follow that, management's discussion analysis. And governmental financial statements are quite unique and different compared to the private sector. If you took a look at them, we'll have these government-wide financial statements with governmental activities and business-type activities. Then you have the fund financial statements, which present the general fund and the debt service fund and your capital projects funds with a focus on some of your major fronts. Probably the terminology you're more used to seeing from the reports provided by management throughout the year. And there's a whole nother set of financial statements for your utility funds, the water sewer. So they're quite unique and different compared to what you may be familiar with, maybe in your own businesses or in the private sector. But it's intended really so users can really get an insight as far as all the different operations that a governmental entity may be engaged in. Because governmental entities are quite unique in that they have different revenue sources, grant funds. grant funds, enterprise funds like water and sewer. So, they're really intended to provide a comprehensive insight. After that, the notes to the financial statements really just try to provide a little bit more insight as far as the numbers themselves. If you wanted a little bit more information on your cash and investments, debt, the capital assets, there's quite extensive notes on the town's participation in the state pension plan. So, some good information there. Everything after the notes to the financial statements, probably 50 or 60 pages after that, goes back to all that additional information, that comprehensive information. If you wanted to see information about individual funds, you can see that after the notes to the financial statements. And also, one of the very useful parts of that document that is used by a lot of parties is the statistical section, that 10-year trend information as far as the various, once again, financial activity, sales taxes, debt capacity, just even demographics and operational information of the town are all in that back of the report. And once again, very useful and used by a lot of parties surprisingly, particularly those, your financial advisors and those that assist you with your bond issuance documents. Just wrapping it up, one of the other documents provided was the Single Audit Reporting Package. Because the town is a recipient of a significant amount of federal funding, we do some additional procedures as required by the federal government on your federal programs. And this year, we focused on your community development blocks, program grants, funding. The Expenditure Limitation Report that Florence mentioned is a state-required budgetary document and just confirms as far as the budgetary expenditures of the town are in accordance with state compliance requirements. Lastly, the audit also issued, or we also issued what we call an audit communication letter. That was a brief, three-page letter, which we talked about. If there were any disagreements with its management, which there were none, we'd be required to report it to you there. If there was any difficulties in conducting the audit, those would be reported there. Any uncorrected misstatements, which there were none, would be identified in that letter. And as Florence noted, deficiencies we noted in internal controls or processes of the town or any areas that we felt warranted additional communication to you as a governing body of the town. So, no red flags as far as financial health is concerned. And we do perform certain analytical procedures on the town's financial health and no particular red flags or areas of concern. With that, before I turn over to you, any questions you may have? I believe I've probably mentioned this the past couple of years about the new requirements for pension standards because of the town's participation in the state retirement system and public safety retirement system. As you probably are well aware, they're in an unfunded position. The town's now going to have to report its proportionate share of those unfunded positions in those pension plans on the town's financial statements next year. And there's no sugar-coating it. It's going to have a negative impact as far as the financial position of the town, as far as strategically what the governing body or management can do. You're making your annual required contributions, and that's all you're really, from a financial management position, can do. There's no requirement to provide additional funding for that. And I truthfully would not even suggest that. You make the annual required contributions as required by those plans. And the idea in the long run, from a pension plan's long-term perspective, the financial health of those can and likely will turn around in the next five to 10 years. So, with that, I'll just thank staff and management of the town. Very responsive, the quality of a financial statement audit is only as good as the cooperation and assistance we get from management staff. And we work with all departments, just not finance. We work with several departments in conducting the audit, and everyone's responsive to our requests and the information we may need. So, with that, Mayor, I'll turn over to you and the council. Should you have any questions about our audit, the financial statements, or our audit approach?
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I had one question and then a couple of comments. So, he doesn't have to stand there after my question is answered. But as part of your audit, do you check to make sure our financials are in accordance with generally accepted accounting practices?
Yes, Mr. Peterson, our audit report, essentially, that's, one of the requirements is to come in, not just audit the numbers to ensure they're correctly stated, but that they are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting standards. And for a municipality such as the Town of Gilbert, it's GASB, Governmental Accounting Standards Board, that sets those standards. So, yes, the format, presentation is all in accordance with those requirements. And I mentioned those pension standards. GASB is the ones that's going to be imposing the new requirement on the town. And once again, we'll be confirming that the town reports its pensions, information in accordance with those new standards next year.
That's all the questions I had.
Thank you.
Have a couple of comments unless there's more questions. Mayor, I just wanted to pull two data points out of the CAFRA. And just, I want to point them out real quick and keep, I think we need to keep a couple of them in mind. I gave staff a chart. Patrick, is it possible to put that up on the overhead? While you're doing that, I'll do my second point first. One thing I wanted to point out is that there's over $60 million in unassigned fund balance, as reported in the CAFRA, in the general fund. I know that we have some upcoming infrastructure projects to pay for, but I would suggest that we assign some of that unassigned balance to that purpose of infrastructure rather than borrowing, borrowing and then repaying the debt with property taxes. Just wanted to point that out. And then my second thing I just wanted to mention real quickly here, and this may look familiar, actually, I shook it up a little bit and cut off. I usually have 15 years' worth of data. This is only five. I have the 15 years' worth if someone's interested. They feel like I'm cherry-picking them. I don't care how we look at it. I just thought it'd be interesting to look at a little differently. But what's new here is that last data point, it's a blue dot in fiscal year 14. And that blue dot is a result of data from the CAFRA. And basically, what that is, is the total expenditure in the general fund for that year minus the capital outlay portion, so as to remove any one-time, obvious one-time expenditures, so as to convert it into an ongoing cost per citizen that we've talked about previously. And I just wanted to point out that the blue dot actually finished above the gray dot, the gray dot being the budgeted ongoing versus the actual ongoing. And that is true now for three years in a row. Nothing to be alarmed about. It's close enough. I don't think it's a big deal. But I just wanted to point that out. As some people were under the impression that we would continue to see our budget be much higher than what we actually spend. That is not the case. So, those were the only two comments. Just to point out again, I do think we've had a departure from where we should be as far as our spending per citizen in relation to population increase and inflation. That was all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? To the team, a clean audit, always two good words to hear. And so, we think of all those who are responsible in our accounting and finance areas, and we appreciate the audit that was performed. And we are going to move on the agenda back to number two, Councilmember Daniels. And should we have family members? Before, did we have any comments from town leadership on that?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank our finance director, Sidney Mathias, and our accounting manager, Florence Schultz, for the great work and another clean audit. We appreciate all their hard work.
Is there a second? Third, fourth, fifth, and sixth? Thank you. Agreed. Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Nancy and her family want to come down. Love to have them up front. While Nancy is coming down, I will tell you what a remarkable town team member Nancy's been. She has spent 23 years at the Town of Gilbert. And we have a certificate of appreciation for you, Nancy. And we're glad your family made it dry. So, that's good. I just want to read two paragraphs out of here, Nancy, because I think it really exemplifies what you've been doing. Nancy has answered hundreds of thousands of calls from citizens with requests for service and/or information. She has demonstrated a level of service delivery that exemplifies the mission and vision that the Town of Gilbert strives to provide our community. Nancy's ability to get the job done while retaining a sense of humanity and compassion to callers has been of great benefit to the citizens of Gilbert. As Nancy brings to close her 23 years of service with the police department, she retires having earned the admiration and respect of her colleagues and supervisors. The measure of respect that Nancy garnered can be demonstrated in knowing that when Gilbert Police, when the Gilbert Police Department lost two of its own, Nancy was chosen both times to conduct their last call. I think that really tells you how much we valued you as an employee in this town, and your service will long be remembered. So, thank you.
I brought along my son Kyle Hallstrom and his wife, Elise. And they drove in the rain and took them an hour to get here. So, I really appreciate that they're here. And I'm going to use my notes. Excuse me. I'm incredibly grateful for the opportunity to work for the Gilbert Police Department for the last 23 years. I was honored to serve alongside some amazing people. I appreciate the council giving me this honor and recognizing my years of service. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Ray, we move to communication from citizens. And I believe that you have at least two. And so, let me, for those here in council chambers and those watching the meeting, as noted on the agenda, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town, but not on the agenda. The council's response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Vice Mayor Ray, I'll turn to you to conduct this part.
Mayor, we have two individuals who have requested to speak. We'll first hear from Joe Guusik and then Jerry McPeak. When you come to the podium, if you'll please introduce yourself and whether or not you are a Gilbert resident. And three minutes, Mayor.
Joe Guusik, Gilbert resident. Mayor Lewis, fellow town council members, town staff, Gilbert residents, and guests. I'm your lovable, slightly annoying, American citizen, your education lorex. And I continue to come and come to encourage you to continue to go out and read to the kids. I appreciate all the things that you do to inspire me, like the Gilbert Rocks. And I'm so sorry, Patrick, but it's a good cause for St. Louis to lose and the Giants to win. With that, Mayor Lewis, I never wear this orange shirt for your San Francisco Giants. I will say that. I told some of you that I was going to bring you a book. This book is, the book's name is "The Book with No Pictures." The point of this book, and it'll be a donation, not to you, to the office, the office of the mayor and the office of the town council. It is there to remind you to take a little bit of your time each and every single year. Think about it this way. If you take five minutes out of every day, work day, five days a week, all year long, that's 22.6 hours a year. All I'm asking you to do is to go out and read to one class a year. And I will, just like Councilman Peterson talked about, school choice. I am a fan of school choice. So, I ask you to go read to the kids that are in the schools, that are in the district, the charter, and private schools. I think it's a great opportunity for you to do this. As I shared with you one time before, one of my little things as far as educating is voting. Now, I can't change people who are already set in their ways. And our country has a very, very poor record of voting. And as Governor Ducey and our state representatives put forward the civics graduation requirement, when you're out there, talk to the kids about one of those requirements. And in fact, why don't you tell them when they grow up that they have, they are given a privilege to vote. But tell them that it's actually, it's their responsibility to vote. And let's get some kids from day one, when they turn 18, to actively get involved and vote. Because as Thomas Jefferson, and I'm not quoting him directly, said, said in one of his quotes, and I'm kind of paraphrasing, when the majority, the minority or the majority of a minority wins, that's the point of tyranny. We need to have everybody involved. And the point of leverage is with our child. You have an awesome opportunity to go out and read to them. And this book is there not to go on a shelf. Please do not put it on a shelf. If I ever walk in your office, put it on the table. Have it stand up. Have it sit down. Let it inspire other people to do the same. Thank you. And I'll be providing this to you later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jerry McPeak.
Hi, my name's Jerry McPeak, and thank you for letting me speak. And the subject matter is Superstition Springs Strip Center on Power and Baseline. I feel we need a policy in order to make the owners of commercial properties, businesses, to maintain the quality to a high standard that will increase our values and not decrease. And what's going on is the maintenance around the entire community, I mean, the entire shopping center. And when this center went in, Mayor Dunham told us this was going to be the grand entrance to Gilbert. And if it is, it's not very well setting with all the people because the landscape is probably never getting touched. But it's decreasing literally the values of our property. And so, I'm here to see if we can get a policy where these people can be fined or have to maintain to a higher level. Because right now, it's not, not happening. And I met with the mayor the other day, and I went through some things, and I found out there isn't a policy out there that actually says and makes people maintain their businesses. And that's not helping us. In fact, a house in our tract, which is a friend of mine's house, just lost $150,000 on his house because it's driven down by some of this stuff that's going on in this center. And I don't think it represents the city of Gilbert at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. And realizing I have to be limited in saying anything, I'll just thank Jerry for coming and meeting with me and for coming tonight. And there is some follow-up that is starting. Thank you.
Just let me add one thing to that. Dan, and I forget his last name.
Dan Henderson.
Has been real helpful in helping me through this. And he's come out there and he looks at it, and he's also agreed. Now, since I think I talked to you, Mayor, the other day, I did find out the name of that center or the owners is called Santa Rosa. And their phone number is 480-994-9762.
And that was in the email, is that right?
I didn't send an email on that, no. I left it on a voicemail.
Okay, sounds good.
That if somebody had even contacted them, because what we have seen, there's a little truck out there and a guy with a trash can, and he's not taking care of it. So, it's no high maintenance like it should be in a center that big.
Thank you, Jerry. Vice Mayor Ray, any other requests tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you. We'll move to the consent calendar, and I will turn right back to you for requests.
Mayor, I move that we approve item five, item six, lowercase a, and six, lowercase b, item six, capital A, with the corrected date as identified in the agenda today. Item eight, I also move that we take item 12 from the public hearing and move the consent agenda, requesting a continuance to February 19th, 2015. I also move for item 14, that we consider appointment of Jean Smith and Cherie Scott as two regular members to the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Board with a term beginning in February 1, 2015, and ending January 31, 2018. And I look to Councilmember Taylor for item 15.
Mayor Lewis, Vice Mayor Ray, I move to appoint Lisa Mangan as a regular member to the Human Relations Commission to fill the remainder of the term ending January 31, 2017.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion and second, please vote. Those items are approved. The seven are voted. Vice Mayor Ray, that would be on the consent calendar, agenda item number four, that council members wish to discuss, is that right?
And seven, Mayor.
And seven, that's right.
And for item four, Mayor, we have three individuals who have requested to speak.
Thank you. Because agenda item number four was discussed in a prior council meeting, I felt it would be appropriate just for the citizens to have a quick review as to what the... be appropriate just for the citizens to have a quick review as to what the agenda item is all about, so Director of Economic Development for the town of Gilbert, Dan Henderson, please.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Dan Henderson, and I serve as the Economic Development Director. Tonight, I'll be providing a brief overview and update on Heritage Marketplace. Brief history, Mayor, members of the council on the Heritage Marketplace, this is a development at the southwest corner of Vaughn Avenue and Gilbert Road. This was originally a request for a proposal that was submitted to the, to the community and to the public in 2006, September 5 of 2006. And Gilbert entered into a development agreement and disposition agreement for the Heritage Marketplace with a group called Sonoran Development Partners. Since that 2007 timeframe, there have been three amendments to the development agreement. The first in December of 2009, the second in February of 2011, and the third in December of 2012. Real quickly, I'd like to give you a brief overview for those that aren't familiar with the project. This is a lovely project done by MD Heritage and LGE Design Build. I'll walk through a couple of photos here just to give you a general overview and context of the project. And a brief snapshot of the current development agreement. So currently, this development agreement is in place that has a total square footage of about 70,000 to 90,000 square feet, two-story minimums in terms of building height and size. I'll be talking a little bit about the various buildings, but essentially, in the total development, there will be five buildings. Currently, under the current agreement, there is a stipulation in the development agreement whereby two restaurants of about 3,000 square feet or more were, were to be developed by September 1, 2014, and if not, there'd be a forfeit of about $200,000. And then subsequently, if they failed to complete buildings, one or two by that date, there would be some additional monies that the town would be able to pursue. I'm happy to tell you that section 5.8.1, the project was, was substantially completed, and so 5.8.1 was not, was not needed. What brings us today before you is a fourth amendment that will further the purpose of the redevelopment plan in the Heritage District. And the fourth amendment has essentially two compelling deal points. The first is recognition that MD Heritage has substantially complied with Phase One requirements. And the second stipulation would be complete Phase Two of the project by June 1, 2016, or pay $200,000 in liquidated damages. Real quickly, I will provide a, an overview of some of the pictures of Phase Two, just to give you some context. This is the site plan, and you'll take note of Building Four and Building Five. Those are the two buildings that are currently not constructed, but that would be constructed in this amendment. That gives you a general overview of, of the overall site plan, again citing Building Four and Building Five. And then real quickly, some brief descriptions about Building Four. It's considered the north building, roughly 10,000 square feet, square feet, including the patio, which we consider the north building or Building Four. And then the south building, which, which faces Vaughn Avenue, is about 23,000 square feet for total square footage in Phase Two of about 34,000 square feet. Real quickly, I'll show you some of the, some of the renderings of the buildings. This is Building Four, the north building, which is the first, the one-story building. And then sort of a pedestrian view as the pedestrians would interact with the building. And then we move on to the south building, or Building Five, and that gives you sort of a visual from the internal parking lot, looking across Vaughn Avenue, and then ultimately what that pedestrian experience would be. I bring your attention back to the overall site plan here, again with focus on Building Four and Building Five, and then leave you with the staff recommendation, which is to adopt the resolution approving amendment four of the disposition and development agreement with, with MD Heritage for the development of the Heritage Marketplace. With those two stipulations that I mentioned earlier, whereby MD Heritage has substantially complied with Phase One requirements, and will complete Phase Two by June 1, 2016, or pay $200,000 in liquidated damages. With that, I leave you with, with the site plan, so that should Mayor and council have any questions, we can certainly address them. We also have the applicant in, in the room, as well as his consultant, and the chairperson from the Redevelopment Commission, should you have any questions.
Thank you. We do have three that wish to speak.
Correct.
And with the council's permission, we'll proceed with that, because the individuals that Dan just mentioned are the three that wish to speak, so Vice Mayor Ray.
So we'll first invite Jim Torgeson to come up and speak, followed by Lynn Lagarde, and lastly, David Sellers. Just a reminder to state your name and whether you're a Gilbert resident. And I think two minutes for each mayor?
They were told three.
Three minutes for each mayor.
Thank you.
I'm Jim Torgeson. I live in Gilbert, and I am the chairman of the Redevelopment District. As we approved it unanimously and very much of one mind, the only change we wanted to really see with the project that is presented to you is what is facing north, the north elevation of the one-story building. Other than that...
Jim, let me just check, are you hearing Jim okay? I'm not, I'm not sure if that mic is working properly, so if you could also maybe get the handheld mic, that sounds better.
Can you hear me now?
Continue, that's better.
You're seeing it. We were very happy with, with the project, except for the north face of the one-story building. That we approved with the stipulation that staff worked closely with them to make something more acceptable by the time this was fully approved. All of us on this committee have put in a little extra time over the last few years, and I would venture to say that David Sellers has brought us something that exceeded our expectations. I am beyond happy with what we've seen so far, and we have not seen somebody desperate to throw people in so that they could absolutely meet a deadline. Certainly, he was a few weeks late on one of the tenants, but it would be better to have the tenants we have now than to have that burn insurance attitude where you put somebody in just so you have someone, and then someone has to leave because the business isn't making it. It's a very stable atmosphere there as far as business goes. I'm seeing this as a continuation of momentum that has built over the last five years, and with the inability to have Rock and Brew continue forward due to financial partner problems, this is the momentum that the district has. This is absolutely gonna keep people building, people wondering what's coming next as we get to the next project and the one after that. I have absolutely no hesitation in endorsing this product, this builder, and what he's done so far, and would be happy to see this move forward, and exceptionally saddened to see it slowed down for any reason. And I would love questions if you have any.
Just to clarify, so representing the Redevelopment Commission, as you voted on Phase One, Phase Two, Phase One has been accepted by the Redevelopment Commission?
Absolutely.
Phase Two is accepted with the feedback that, looking at the building from the north, that there are some suggestions that that would be modified and changed?
Yes, the northern elevation of Building One, or Building Four, rather, is unfortunately quite warehouse-like in its appearance at this point. Every other side of the other building, of that building and Building Five is fantastic, have absolutely no problems whatsoever, but we've put a lot of time and effort as a, as a town into creating something along the power line trail. If we're, if we're trying to encourage a pedestrian activity there, it should be something that draws in and plays with that pedestrian activity, rather than looking like the bag of a warehouse. That being said, Mr. Sellers has brought something that exceeded my expectations before. I believe, I have to trust that staff is, wants to do that job, they see that job, and that it would move forward to continue what we have there.
Thank you, Jim. Why don't we proceed with the next two requests for, for speaking, and if you could be nearby in case questions come? Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray.
We invite Lynn Lagarde.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lewis, and members of the council. Lynn Lagarde, with me is David Sellers, who'll be available to answer any other specific questions you have, appearing on behalf of the developer, MD Heritage LLC. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the agreement, as Dan Henderson outlined to you. We believe it's a question of fairness and good faith in working with a developer who's brought you a great project tonight. That amendment to the agreement maintains the $200,000 penalty, but it puts a new requirement on David that will cause him to invest another $5 million in your community, and that is to build Phase Two right away and build on the momentum that he has started with Phase One. We would have to have that project done by June 1, 2016. Dan went over the history of the project. There were three amendments over six years, and the prior developer simply could not get it done. So David entered the picture in 2012. That was the third amendment, based on the originally approved site plan, which he improved upon, and based on the same square footage that has been there since 2007, the 70,000 to 90,000 square feet. In the second amendment, before David, your deadlines were, that amendment was enacted in 2011, your deadlines were December 31, 2013 commencement of construction, September 1, 2014 completion of construction. David entered into an amendment with you a year later that raised the size of the restaurants to 3,000 square feet, but maintained those same deadlines, and then added the deadline about the restaurants opening. The restaurants simply weren't able to get open on time. Now, because David had been meeting every submittal deadline, was obviously spending a lot of money on plans and engineering, your staff knew they had a project. The whole point of that $200,000 was to keep it from going on another six years. So very early on, David closed on the property in September, he was under construction in December, he met that deadline, as he did every other. So I think your staff, seeing him meet the deadlines, just didn't think about that guarantee number, never asked him for it. David's busy building his project, he didn't think about it. All of a sudden, when the deadline came in September, the city suddenly came and said, "Oh, we need this money." You had previously granted three extensions, working cooperatively with the developer. If we had known that the city still wanted that money, we would have come in and said, "Look, the restaurants can't make it." Based on your prior record, I think you would have just said, "Okay, you can have another 60, 90 days, whatever it takes." But just because of a mutual oversight, we're here tonight, and so we're asking you to just settle this in a fair way, let David proceed. You're, you're still getting more of the project than you had in the first agreement, and he's still gonna be responsible for $200,000 if he doesn't perform. And based on his previous performance, I think you're going to be pleased. I'm gonna use one minute of David's three, because I know there was a question last time about additional square footage. The site is somewhat constrained, you can see the parking in the middle, you can see the wide setbacks that were part of your Heritage Marketplace guidelines, the wide sidewalks, the courtyards, all the things that the town wanted that makes it a unique, attractive area, David put in with a lot of quality. That's a little bit of a constraint on the site, in addition, of course, to parking, which is always a constraint on a site. But if you have specific questions about that, David's here to answer them. But we're asking you to approve this agreement, let us build on this momentum, let us keep a good thing going, and bring you even two more restaurants. So now you'll have almost seven instead of the two you originally were gonna get.
Thank you. And so David, if I'm understanding that, you're just available, but at this point did not wish to speak? Okay, thank you. Do we have questions before I ask for some feedback? Any questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, Mayor, I had a question related to this amendment. There's been some talk about momentum, and I agree that there's momentum, so, but the question is, is there anything related to this amendment that is holding up the developer from proceeding? Something unresolved here that has to be resolved before they're allowed to proceed?
Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe there's anything other than just a need to carry forward the momentum. To my knowledge, there are no contractual obligations with MD Heritage, with any other tenants. There may be, but I'm not aware of them. Lynn Lagarde commented that it was just in regards to $200,000.
I can imagine they're anxious to get it resolved, because they are, but I'm just wondering if there's any reason they couldn't continue the momentum they've got and go right ahead without this being immediately resolved.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The, the two items that we were trying to resolve was a discrepancy in the square footage. We've been asked about the density of the project and the total square footage of the project. The one thing that this amendment does do is it does clarify that the total project size was supposed to be between 70,000 and 90,000 square feet. What we're trying to get everyone to agree to is that our project is over 70,000 square feet. A small portion of that square footage is within the patios that we've provided on the, at several of these, of these restaurants. I'm just a, a partner in the partnership that developed the property. I would love to continue moving forward with the project. I can't say that my partner, if they had to pay that $200,000, would continue moving forward with the project. They may not build the second phase. And so that's why we are trying to tie a $200,000 penalty to the completion of Phase Two, because we're going in there and I think expediting what anybody ever thought was gonna happen with the project, which is finish the entire project, you know, within 24 months of putting the first shovel on the ground.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay, did you have a question, Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, that, so, I guess I'm trying to understand why it's contingent as well. I mean, if it's a great place for you guys to make money and Gilbert to benefit, why would that, why would we hold that up?
I, I'm not saying that it is, it is contingent or not. Like I said, I'm, I'm one of the parties of the partnership that's developing the project. I would like to continue moving forward. I can't say that my other partner would continue moving forward if, if after all of the capital that's been invested from, from our end, the original development agreement stated that two restaurants were supposed to be in the project. We've got six going in Phase One, five are under construction. You've got a capital investment from the developer of over $7.5 million. You've got tenants putting in another $2 million. We weren't getting any activity on the office development in Phase One. We specked out the second floor office in Phase One, spent another million dollars of our own money to try to generate activity there. So I, I think what we're trying to look at it as a mutual beneficial project, and after putting in that kind of capital investment, after meeting all of these deadlines, having the town come in and then penalize us for performing in every component possible, it just, I, I think my partner had some issues with that, moving forward with another phase.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. On, on the topic in terms of what the elevation is on the north side, I haven't heard your follow-up comments in terms of what the Redevelopment Commission gave you, they gave you feedback, but I'm interested in your thoughts and how you might address what you heard from redevelopment.
So we, we've had a great relationship with the Redevelopment Commission, ever since we first brought in this project. It, it completely transformed from what the prior developer had designed. They had pretty flat buildings, no, no change in elevation from one building to another, and collectively with the Redevelopment Commission, what we've tried to do was build on the character of the Heritage District with buildings that looked like they were built in different eras, with different materials. The building on the corner where Zinberger is, it's a very agricultural-looking building. The middle building is supposed to look like maybe something that was built in the 30s or 40s on Gilbert Road in the Heritage District. Building Three was meant to tie into the original train station that was in Gilbert with the mudset tile-sloped roof with the, with the color of the stucco. And so on Building Four, what we, we did try to do, it, it does look like a warehouse building, because we wanted it to look like a warehouse building, that then had been modified to be restaurants and retail, kind of like what you see in Portland, Boulder, Colorado, Meatpacking District in New York. So we tried to give it that... So we tried to give it that look. I do agree, we should have spent some more attention to the north side elevation. So with those stipulations, we've already met two times internally. We have a new elevation that's ready right now to show the Redevelopment Commission, where we're going to open up the north side of Building Four and try to present it better to the linear park.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Cook?
Question for Dan. If you go back a couple of slides to your summary slide that you had, there's basically kind of a spreadsheet table. There we go. Building height and size. You have the words "two-story minimum," and I was trying to find which agreement, one, two, and three, that was there. And then obviously, did we make a change that removed that, or is that incorrect, based upon what you just shared with us?
Mayor, members of the council, the two-story minimum from a building height and size perspective is my understanding with the Heritage Village Center guidelines. There are stipulations that suggest a sort of a facade that looks as though it has a two-story development. If you look at the development on the west side of the road, and you look at the development on the east side of Gilbert Road, you see some examples of where the development looks like it is two stories. The phrase here, "two-story minimum," is not a mandate that the development has to be two stories. It's my understanding through design guidelines that it has to have sort of a roof and an elevation that support a two-story minimum look, but not two-story minimum build. Does that make sense?
It does. I just want to clarify that it wasn't in any of the agreements that you sent over to us, and I just wanted to verify that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Let me, oh, Vice Mayor Ray.
I have a question. I'm not sure who it's best addressed to, perhaps David. One of my, one of my concerns with this amendment, and I appreciate what David and his team have done, it's pretty unbelievable to go downtown, especially on a weekend night. It's just, it's crazy busy, parking garage is full, it's wonderful. One of my concerns with this new agreement is the $200,000 penalty. I think it would make more sense, in fact, it would make more sense for the residents of Gilbert to have that put in an escrow fund beforehand, so that if the amendment is breached or not, if they're not able to follow through, that rather than forcing the town to go after them to try to collect the money, that the money's already there. I understand that, or I suspect that Mr. Sellers and his team, that puts a little bit of a damper on their capital funds moving forward for this project. With that being said, it's only 4% of what's expected capital used for this project. So I would prefer to see it placed in a, in a, some sort of escrow account, so that we don't have what Lynn referred to as a mutual oversight next time, that that is already in place, and there's not some sort of, again, mutual oversight was a term that was used earlier. So I don't know what David's thoughts are on that, but that's something I'd like to see happen.
Thank you. David, you want to comment on that?
I would agree to that.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Taylor, say that again?
Mayor, I just have some things to discuss when we're done with the question time.
Okay. Let me start with Councilmember Bridget Peterson, realizing the Redevelopment Commission was actively involved, but Planning Commission had a little bit of involvement too. So let's start from left to right and just share your feelings on how you'd like to proceed.
I'm thankful that Mr. Sellers has said he would agree to the $200,000 in escrow, because I think it's a sticking point for some of the council members. I think it's a good idea moving forward with this agreement. I'm fine with the square footage for the property being 72,000 square feet or around there, or 71,000 square feet. When I look at a project that says 70,000 to 90,000 square feet, it's like I'm looking back at an old zoning project, perhaps three and a half to five dwelling units per acre. The applicant can come in with three and a half, or they can come in with five, or they can come in with somewhere in between. They met the 70,000 obligation. I think if we push it to try and put more in there, we're putting 10 pounds of potatoes in an maybe eight-pound bag. I won't go for a five-pound bag, but I'd say an eight-pound bag. And parking and traffic is an issue and a concern, since I was just down there Friday night, and like Vice Mayor Ray said, it's very busy, and to try and add more. I know that there's issues with trying to put residential over commercial, and I applaud them for specking out that second story on Gilbert Road, and I hope that they can fill that. I think it would be a great opportunity for businesses to be down there, and I guess those are my basic thoughts at this point.
Well, in summary, you're okay proceeding, and you do support having the $200,000 put into an escrow?
Yes. I don't see a reason to delay this decision any longer. I think that everybody has come to terms with what we're asking for, unless something different comes up from the discussion this evening.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
I echo Bridget's sentiments. I feel like the value added in the Heritage Marketplace project has kind of upped the game in downtown, and I really appreciate that effort. I've always been in favor of that project, and I love seeing our momentum downtown. I was originally in favor of trying to increase density by adding maybe a multifamily component or some loft living above, but recognizing the parking restraints that we have downtown, and that we may have an opportunity to do something else in the northern 11 acres that the town owns. I'm, of course, happy with moving forward with what we have. Doesn't really matter to me at this point whether we have $200,000 in escrow or not. I recognize, in hindsight, of course, that perhaps the agreement that was written previously, while David Sellers and team might be developers, they're not necessarily restaurant owners. And so you're beholden, if you will, to some of those restaurant owners in order to meet their time and guidelines as well. And so, again, I'm happy with what we have downtown. I'd like to see it continue, and I think it's only going to get better, Mayor. So I look forward with optimism to what we're going to see next.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. I've had two conversations this week, one with a council member in a neighboring city and another senior leader in a municipality, and they both complimented us on our downtown and what's happened. And, you know, that has a lot to do with David's efforts and his contribution, and so obviously, that's some momentum that we want to continue. This agreement, I think, improved over the course of the amendments, as I read them last night and kind of dug in and asked Dan a bunch of questions. So I think there's a lot to these agreements, but it's always been a two-part agreement, right? Gilbert taxpayers have put in millions as well, in the parking garage, in the offsite improvements, the traffic light, and, you know, it's a compliment to Patrick and his team and Dan and his team for some of the ways that's been negotiated and really improved in attracting things there. But, you know, being a two-part agreement, you know, there's, I think we're setting a precedent here if we don't have some enforcement of the penalty. You know, we approved a change order with Rivellon that softened up some of the conditions, and so this is another one. And so while this isn't, you know, directed at Dave and his efforts, because they're outstanding, and I don't feel that the full 200 should be assessed, because, I mean, it was, as we've heard, it's just, and I don't disagree with a lot of that, but it's, you know, it's by a hair. The message that we're sending, even for if we approve this tonight, right, is, well, we need to come back and kick the can down the road again, you know, change something else. So I think it's important to our residents and our taxpayers that we have, you know, some, you know, integrity in our agreements. And so if things are missed on our side, then we should own up to it, and on the developer, it's on their side to own up to it. And so that's how I would, I like Vice Mayor Ray's recommendation as an improvement, but I think, you know, a better way is to have something, maybe $50,000, $100,000, because to me, the bigger issue here is that development agreements matter, and what's in them matters, and developers should take them very seriously. You know, in this case, the 200 wasn't put in escrow originally. But again, the performance was outstanding, and I think the outcome is really what we should be looking at, because it has been so stellar and positive for our downtown. So I think something. I don't know what the right number is, much less than the 200.
So I'll just take the summary. You'd not vote on the agreement the way it's?
Not the way, not the way it is.
All right. Vice Mayor Ray?
I appreciate Mr. Sellers' willingness to agree to the $200,000 escrow, and with that, I'm ready to move forward.
Okay. Councilmember Cook?
We've had some good discussion, and I've met with the team privately, one-on-one. They've answered, you know, a number of my questions. You know, three years ago, what we see today wasn't there, and it was really a collaborative effort from town to council to our owners of the property and developers of the property. And there's no doubt, the activity in the downtown was really the vision that we had intended to have with this council, even prior councils. And it is wonderful to see the fruits of all that effort. As much as I would like more vertical, I think I'm okay to let that go, and we move forward with the agreement.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I, just to set the stage on my perspective, I think I'm thinking more along the lines of Councilmember Taylor on this. And the question I'm asking myself, and I'm sure we all do, and we'll probably just answer the question differently, but to me, I have to ask myself, what is in the best interest of the taxpayers? And as I think about this, personally, I am very pleased with the downtown. It's beautiful. I think they've delivered a great product. There's no question. So personally, I'd like to be generous, but this money isn't really mine to be generous with. It's a taxpayer's money. So I have to think about, you know, is this amendment an improvement in the taxpayer's position in this agreement? And there was another amendment that came forward that I approved, and I did so happily to this same agreement, and for the very reason. I thought it was a win-win, as Mr. Sellers mentioned previously. I felt like the taxpayers were winning as well. I'm sure they were too, but it was good. It was a good arrangement. In this case, I'm really not sure what the taxpayers are gaining. The center is in, so they have that. So the other phases or the other buildings, we can get a guarantee for those start dates, but on the other hand, I don't know, but what those are already the planned dates. If I'm a developer and I want to make money, I'm going to move while the market supports it, and the market does right now. So I think they're anxious to move. I think there's momentum, as they mentioned. So whether or not we're going to get the buildings done any sooner than they would do it on their own is really a big question mark to me. I don't know that that's the case. Furthermore, the momentum is free to continue now as much as they like. I will just say, I do find it somewhat disconcerting that there's at least one or one party to this development agreement that would be reticent to continue with the development if we held them to their agreement. I find that disconcerting. I hope that's not really true. I expect that any agreement we make, they're going to hold us to, and we will honor that. On the flip side, they should be willing to honor the agreement on their side. So I'm with Councilmember Taylor. We need to set a proper precedent. I'm afraid we've already set a precedent, as was mentioned by Ms. Legaroe. I'm going to say her name wrong, but Lynn, I'm sorry, I wish I could say her last name. I don't mean to be too familiar, but Lynn mentioned that if we, they had asked for an extension, we would have granted it. That's the precedent we've set previously. So if they have a new date, and they can't meet that date, and they ask for an extension, are we going to grant it? That's the impression we've set. These agreements can be revised as needed to suit the developer. Well, that's not really how they should work. It should be a win for the taxpayer if we're going to amend it. And again, I go back to that. I don't see that it is. And so I do agree that Councilmember Ray's change is an improvement. I think it's only the right thing to do to put it in escrow. If that's the best we can do tonight, that's okay, I guess, but I would prefer that we enforce some kind of a penalty, because I think one should apply when you don't meet your deadlines and you don't, and maybe $200,000 is too much, but I think something should be there.
Thank you. I'm going to make my comments after the vote, and so I will entertain a motion.
Just a quick question for our town attorney. Mike, how do we want to proceed? Because what we're voting on, we would add that escrow amount. Do you need to rewrite something, or how does that work?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I would, and I could next week, but the motion or the proposal that you would make now would be approve the amendment as presently written with an added stipulation that the maximum amount of liquidated damages be set in an escrow account or similar instrument in a form agreed to by the town attorney. And so the current, the current agreement you have or amendment you have before you now with that added, with that added clause, and instruct the town attorney to draft that, and when that's done, we can have the mayor sign it. Of course, it'll also be reviewed by MD Heritage prior to signature.
Thank you. Would you like to make the motion?
Sure, Mayor. I move that we approve item four with an added stipulation for the town attorney to draw up, add a scheme for the $200,000 in liquidated damages to be included or put into an escrow account prior to the signing of the agreement, or prior to the, as part of the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
With that motion, second please vote. That's approve with a 5-2 vote. Thank you. I'll just make a couple of comments. Lynn, one thing you said related to $200,000, that this became a topic of discussion in planning year September, it was not. It really came into discussion recently when this new agreement for Phase Two was talked about. And so I wanted to clarify that when I am thanking the council, and we do have a council that is very focused on making sure the taxpayers get their money's worth, and so there were some great comments, there was good discussion. I apologize to David that a newspaper article just about cost you a huge opportunity that had nothing to do with Gilbert, and that was not the intent of this council. It was the intent of the council to look out for the taxpayers, and so there were some discussions that caused a headline that was not in your favor. The reason why we have heard that expression exceeded expectations is because the only thing in the contract that was not met was September 1st, 2014. And the original intent of our town leadership and staff and the Redevelopment Commission was, let's put something in there to get two restaurants. And basically, because Gilbert has received a great reputation as a place to do business, because of other restaurant owners to the south who have said that, we were able to get six. And I agree that if we had some discussions, the council would have probably moved forward, and I disagree with the statement from a council member that that's not part of good business, because things change. And the Redevelopment Commission knew all the details. They knew that one of the restaurant owners was having some struggles, which caused him delays, and I thank you for the integrity, because you could have, as that September 1st date approached, you could have found a way to meet that deadline, and yet you would have put quality to the side, and your integrity is appreciated for your quality, and I thank you for that. And I simply ask that you appreciate a council that pays attention to the taxpayers, but I do believe that the taxpayers have been well-served, and I agree with what our Redevelopment Commission said, that we have represented taxpayers, have had our expectations exceeded, and we thank you. So in a business partnership, we want this to continue. And so with the vote tonight, carry on. You do have some things that you'll need to do, but I also thank you, and I go back to the council. There was a discussion that took place with David about our parking garage, and that you were willing, as a benefit to the town of Gilbert, to make a major change, and that was to our benefit, again, to the taxpayers. So I thank you for that too, and I thank the council for paying attention to details, wanting to support the taxpayers. But I just want to echo Redevelopment Commission, our town leadership, and now the council vote, is that we have appreciated what you've done. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, we have agenda item number seven.
We do. Councilmember Victor Peterson and Councilmember Taylor wanted to discuss that.
Please.
It's okay, I can, okay, so just for the benefit of, you know, those following here, this has to do with authorizing a contingency transfer from the general fund of $1.384 million for litigation expenses and consulting services for the safety repair at and consulting services for the safety repair at Elliott District Park, otherwise known as the Big League Dreams site. I asked staff to kind of break that out for me, to just understand how much is legal, how much is consulting, and then just kind of understand what the end game is on this. The breakout generally was about $920-ish thousand on the legal side, and then the rest is on the consulting, engineering, and a smaller part in terms of some safety improvements there. I guess the short of this, and I just want to keep this high level because of the condition of the matter itself, is I don't know that I'm comfortable moving on this item, because there's not really a good end game here. And to commit these types of funds where, you know, we have other things coming out of the general fund, like public safety, there's other parks needs. I asked a couple people today, have you ever been to this park? No. Do you know anybody who ever goes to this park? No. Now, that doesn't mean that it's not used, but it's one of the parks that's used far less than our other parks. And to commit this amount of money for something that doesn't have a very good structured plan, I would, you'd never see that in business. I don't know that we would do that in our personal life. So I want to keep it high level, but I wanted to give staff a little more time to get a better plan for us for this. And with a good plan, I'm willing to move on this amount of money, but I don't see a good, solid end game here when I try to dig into the details. So I'm not prepared to support this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I have similar sentiments, and maybe I just need a good talking to, but I feel like the litigation costs and just the other costs, I would like to see a plan. I'd like to see some kind of a budget in place before we proceed. Now, if we have no choice, maybe that is what it is, but I'm not convinced of that. So I'd like to press the pause button until we have some kind of a budget. So I don't know. That's just been my sense, that every time I turn around, there's new costs that, and maybe I just have a bad memory, and it's all exactly what we talked about, but it feels like it's new, so.
To our town manager, if you could, first question, if we did not move forward tonight, what would the impact be? And if there was some guidance to continue to educate the council on a big picture and where we're headed, would that be appropriate? Any comments?
Yeah. Mayor, members of the councils, you know, we are in active litigation with the contractor of the facility at Elliott District Park. So these funds are to continue that process and to press our case through the courts, as well as pay the, finish the work that's been done and pay the necessary legal experts that we need to justify our position before the courts. So if we did not move forward on this, it would, and I will ask our town attorney to provide his guidance as well, but it would impact our ability to see that case through and to recoup the funds that we feel that we are owed to bring that park to the condition we initially paid for.
Okay. Vice Mayor, do you want to make a comment now before we?
I was just going to have Mike clarify a couple things. Number one, we are not spending this million dollars tomorrow on the legal fees, right? This is to put aside to continue the case. I suspect another check will be written at some point to our legal team, but this is not to spend all million dollars, 800,000 of it immediately. And the second part of that same question is, one of the potential outcomes would be that if we were to win in this lawsuit, we would then also ask for expenses to be covered or legal fees. So this money may, in fact, be reimbursed to the town at some point. Is that correct?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct on both counts. This money includes both the construction for the safety concerns that we felt compelled to move upon after the injuries that occurred at the park, as well as the witness fees and legal fees through the end of this fiscal year. And it's also true, Mayor and Vice Mayor, that this is all part of the town's claim to be reimbursed for these, for this expense, as well as the necessary safety-related construction.
Councilmember Cook?
Mike, a quick question related to any of the construction costs related to safety. And again, I'm trying to remember, did the other, the current owners of the facility, do they not agree that those items that we deem public safety risk, that they're not willing to provide any dollars to make those corrections? Is that what I'm understanding here, that we're setting aside these funds because they're not in agreement with our assessment of the public safety risks that are out there today?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, I would prefer to discuss those matters in executive session.
I understand. Okay.
Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, if we could just get additional direction as a part of this vote to staff to deliver within whatever's a reasonable timeframe, a plan that includes a budget for this process, I would feel comfortable that I could at least vote for it. That's really what I'm looking for, Mayor.
Thank you. Would there be a reasonable time period to be able to do that, that you would suggest?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the council. We could schedule an executive session within the next couple of weeks or three weeks, and I believe have that information and present this at the immediately following council meeting.
And to the same question I started with, if we did not vote tonight, we had that executive session, and let's say this was on the next agenda, what impact does that have? Do we have some of that money that we need to be using right now? I'm seeing nods.
Hold on, Mayor.
One moment, Mayor.
And to our town manager, town attorney, Councilmember Taylor was suggesting we have Andy come forward, that she might also have some feedback on that.
Mayor, members of the council, that would be correct.
Okay. Andy, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Andy Welsh, Assistant to the Town Manager. So I do have some information for you in terms of the breakdown of the total request. So approximately $925,000 of the total request tonight is for the litigation fees. Some of those fees are for the legal expenses, and then some of them are for all of the consultants. That is to get us to June 30th, the end of this fiscal year. We will come back if the litigation is not resolved in mediation before the end of the fiscal year for additional funds, with an update about where we are with the litigation in terms of the schedule for a court date and where we are in the process. So we will be continuing to come back. We're looking at mediation in April, so we will also be coming back to council in March for an executive session for some direction on what you would like to see happen during mediation. The remainder of the funds of the request tonight is $100,000 for contingency. The remainder of the $359,000, approximately 200,000 of those are for the experts for the safety repairs. We have been coring, we have been doing structural design and drawings while we're out there doing the safety repairs. And as you recall, that's fixing the seating and the 21 aisles, so that we can eliminate the tripping hazards, as well as filling in some of the major gaps in the flatwork, as well as addressing the ramps and the concession stands. Those are some of the major areas. And then approximately $160,000 of the remainder requests is for the experts for the litigation side. They came up with their reports that were due to the court in September.
And a hypothetical, if we have an executive session in the next two weeks and had this put on the February 19 agenda, what impact does that have?
We do have some outstanding bills to our consultants.
Okay. And so to Councilmember Peterson, Councilmember Taylor, I do like the thought of having the executive session, and I guess that for some reason, in that executive session, there's some things that we wanted to undo, we could if we move forward, but.
And Mayor, one thing that I had asked Andy before is, you know, it's important that our citizens continue to have access to the park. And, you know, the good news is, is it doesn't sound like there's any major things that are cornered off, and we're not taking whole fields offline. And if we do that, it sounds like they'll continue to be able to, you know, play in their tournaments and things, you know, the programming will continue. So I was happy, you know, to hear that. Andy, you can correct me if I'm misunderstanding that.
Mayor Lewis, Councilmember Taylor, what has been happening is we are on the last two of the eight fields completing the safety repairs. What we have been doing is the fields that are closed are offline during the week, so they are not playable, but they are then repaired and ready for play Friday night through Sunday, which is their busiest time for tournaments on the weekends. The seating areas are closed for about one month on each of the two fields at a time that are closed, and then they either set up temporary seating on the ramps, or viewers can watch from the concession stands from the clubhouses.
Thank you. What I'm hearing, though, is that in giving a recommendation to the council for all that needs to be happening as you're helping manage that, that we should approve this tonight, in your opinion?
Yes, please, Mayor.
Okay. Other comments before we might, Councilmember Daniels?
There was a statement made by Councilmember Taylor that this is one of our most underused parks, or that not a lot of citizens are actually utilizing it. Maybe we could get part counts for the next time that we discuss this, just because I don't actually think that that, the numbers that I've seen don't reflect that. So I just want to make sure that we're accurately reflecting. I'd hate for someone to think that we had a park that we were spending millions of dollars on that's not being used to its full potential, and I think that that might be helpful.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I don't want to create any doubt that there's lack of resolve on our part to litigate on behalf of the taxpayers to recover whatever is rightfully theirs. And I don't want to put that process at risk. I'm just looking for, rather than a revolving door kind of update, I'm hoping we can have a budgeted for the whole process in front of us. And I know there's going to be contingency there, there's going to be some question marks, but let's plan our best guess on those contingencies. Let's have an end game in mind. If we do that, I'm fine to approve tonight, but that's the direction I'm hoping we can give with the part of that approval vote, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, we will deliver that at the executive session.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve item seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. With that motion, second please vote. Councilmember Taylor, do you have a comment?
Well, I just wanted to clarify the motion. So that includes the follow-up.
Includes the commitment for Patrick, but he says it, I believe it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
A Cardinals fan? Okay. Please, continue to vote.
Trust but verify. I will verify.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ray, consent agenda, I believe we've completed.
I think we have. I hope we have.
We move to the public hearing, and we have continued 12, so nine, 10, 11, and 13. And before, well, let me just, do we have any individuals that wish to speak from the public?
We do not, Mayor.
Okay. As a council on nine, 10, 11, 13, do we have council members that would like to have some discussion on those items? Then I will open the public hearing on agenda items nine, 10, 11, and 13, and close the public hearing on agenda items nine, 10, 11, and 13, and we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve items nine, 10, 11, and 13.
Second.
Okay. With that motion, second please vote. Thank you. Administrative items, we have completed 14 and 15. 16, board commission and committee reports, please. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I want to formally invite all of you to the We Are Gilbert Breakfast, the annual breakfast that we will be having March 3rd, Tuesday morning. And the Boys and Girls Club has been so gracious to offer to host that breakfast, and we have some great partners involved. We have, gosh, Forrester, Melissa Forrester from the United Food Bank, who's helping on our committee, and some great, just some great people involved. We want to invite everyone, all of you leaders there. It's going to be from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. there. If you can't stay for the whole time, we understand, but we would love to have you. That's Tuesday, March 3rd in the morning at the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other updates. Okay, report from future meetings, policy items, nothing noted, and so report from town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, just one item to report tonight. It's my pleasure to report, as well as, well, sad to see them go, but two of our assistant to the town managers will be moving on in the month of February. Nicole Lance, excuse me, Nicole Lance has been hired by the city of Surprise, Arizona to be their new deputy city manager, and Gabe England, also an assistant to the town manager, has been hired by the city of Trinidad, Colorado to be their new city manager. So we're very proud to see them continue on with their careers, grateful for all the great work they did for us here at the town in Gilbert, and we will miss them.
Thank you. I think you could Spark app that'll take place tomorrow. Do you have any comments on that?
I do. We will be kicking off our third annual Spark App League tomorrow at ASU's Poly Campus. We've got another sold-out, capacity-only crowd, and one of our exciting new team members this year sponsors is Google, and Google will be actively involved in this competition. They are bringing in one of their top engineers to talk to the students, and they will be providing mentorship to the students through this program, and I'll look forward to seeing their apps this spring when they come forward.
Thank you. Report from the council. Councilmember Daniels?
Mayor Lewis, Student Government Days has been designated for March 4th. There are applications available now, and we invite all high school-age students to apply to participate in Student Government Days.
Thank you. Any other reports? So a report from Mayor. Saturday, Gilbert will be involved in the Unity Walk, a regional event that will take place in Tempe. We thank our Human Relations Commission for leading those efforts. We also had the opportunity to attend this week Chandler's, Chandler Unified School District, their annual report, and that was also put into video and will be on display in Channel 11. I'm going to pass this report down to our liaison to the Chandler Unified School Districts. Councilmember Peterson? Our Gilbert Unified School District will be having a State of the Schools a week from today here in Council Chambers at 7:00 a.m. The public is invited to come and hear a report. And the State of the Town is scheduled for Tuesday night, February 10th, at the Harkins Theater in Santan Village at 5:00 p.m., and it will go for about an hour, and we look forward to that. And I think my last item, representing the town of Gilbert and the council at the Super Bowl, will be a member of our team, Kurt Sharp, not using any taxpayer dollars, personal funds and relationships. He has a ticket. He will send a couple of tweets, and he wanted to know, because he is a Seahawk fan, if the mayor could officially announce that the town of Gilbert is cheering for Seattle Seahawks, but I don't know how the council feels about that.
One descending vote.
One descending vote, all right. Maybe I'll just let that one lie low.
You can't have that vote.
Can't have that vote. It's not on the agenda, all right. Then with that, we thank all who helped with tonight's meeting. Meeting adjourned.[1782.15]